Okay, I'll call this village board meeting for July fifteenth, two thousand nineteen to order. Roll call, please.
Joe Zeltzberger.
Here.
Phil Williams.
Here.
Bill Random.
Here.
Erin Moran.
Here.
Chris Zellner.
Here.
Gary Hertzberg.
Here.
Okay, first thing we have is confirmation of open meeting compliance, public postings, official notices, and online availability. Lori?
I can confirm that the draft agenda was published in the Wannakee Tribune on July eleventh. The final agenda was posted on July eleventh at all three official village posting locations, and I have copies of the affidavits confirming the postings. And the final agenda for the meeting packets were made available online July eleventh. The public hearing notice was published in the newspaper on June twenty-seventh and July fourth with notices mailed on July first.
Thank you. All right, first item on the agenda is our consent agenda. Would anybody like anything pulled or look for a motion?
Number three, please.
Number three. Okay. We have a motion for the first two.
Move approval of one and two of the consent agenda.
Motion by Phil Williams.
Second.
Second by Erin Moran. Call the question, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, posed, ayes have it. Let's take number three right away. Joe?
Sure. Calendar and everything looks good. What I'm wondering is, is there a way that we can increase the public's ability to comment on that sooner? You know, I don't know that we have everything in place.
Yeah. We did do something like that last year, Todd, did we? Where we had, did we have additional comment on the budget?
Yeah, I believe we had a room, forgot exactly how it worked, but we made a-
I think there was a meeting in between, in this calendar, be the October fourteenth, the meeting in between, so like the first meeting in November.
Yeah, that's what I was thinking, there was something.
I think we put it on the agenda as an item.
We did build in another meeting. I don't recall whether it was before or after.
I don't think it was before the October meeting, and that would be tough to do anything before that October, but we could see if we could build something into the first meeting of November similar to last year.
I think that would be useful to the board.
So do you want her to, how do you want her to build that in? Is it during a board meeting?
I think during a board meeting, yeah.
Okay, so which one would it be then in potential even?
Well, I guess it would be the fourth of November.
Okay.
Yep.
It's acceptable. Okay, do you want to make that motion?
You bet. So I'll move to approve this with the addition of additional public comment at the November fourth meeting.
Okay, motion by Joe Zeltzberger, second by Bill Random. Any other comments? Call the question, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Posed, ayes have it. Public comment for items not on the agenda. Is there anybody here who would like to make a comment to the board?
I just want to know if there'll be, Linda Ashmore, I want to know if there's going to be a chance for a public comment or addition to be speak during the trustee vacancy portion. If not, I'd like to speak now.
The posted agenda puts this in your discretion. All items that are on the agenda that do not have a public hearing are not subject to public comment. There is language within the agenda that once you get to that agenda item, as the chair, you would have the authority to allow public comment if you wanted to. So I would say that this is not the appropriate time. It's either no public comment on it or when we get to the agenda item.
Okay, so I'll address it when we get to there. Okay. Okay. Sorry. Maria Pat, one thousand, Wexford Drive.
I am standing here with the twenty nineteen Public Works Improvement Street Resurfacing letter that I received way back when, and I am wondering where we are in that position because the streets up in our neighborhood are turning into gravel road. They're pretty bad and they need to be fixed, and my concern is that they're going to get to the point of being fixed when the school year begins and all that school traffic is coming through that area. So I'm just wondering where we are in our schedule, and I know the weather has been lousy with rain, so I'll grant that piece.
Do you want to?
The contractor started actually this morning on this portion of the project, so they'll be doing catch basins and then they'll continue on with the asphalt work. So it's in progress. I suspect you'll see some activity here in the next few weeks to the month, depending on where you are in the list of the roads.
Thank you.
Okay, anyone else? Public hearing. Okay, then we'll move on. First thing we have is our presentation for Bird City USA presentation.
Good evening. My name is Chuck Hagner. I'm the director, the state director of Bird City, Wisconsin. Bird City USA is a different program, and I'm not representing that today. So President Zellner, members of the Board of Trustees, thank you for making time in your busy agenda for me today. I am pleased to be here to salute the village of Wannakee, its public officials, and its conservation-minded residents for your efforts to make this community a better place for birds and for people. Since Bird City, Wisconsin, was founded just ten years ago, it has recognized one hundred and nine communities as bird cities. Today, the village of Wannakee becomes the one hundred and tenth. Congratulations. The Bird City application, under which Wannakee is being honored, required meeting criteria across six categories: habitat creation, protection, and monitoring; community forest management; limiting or removing threats to birds; public education; energy and sustainability; and recognition and celebration of World Migratory Bird Day. Bird City's approach is to encourage bird protection and public education on as many fronts as possible. Examples of specific actions that can be taken by communities include protecting and creating bird habitat, participating in annual Swift Knights Out and other citizen science bird monitoring programs, fielding a team in the annual Great Wisconsin Bird-a-thon, and removing urban threats, like taking steps to reduce window collisions and keeping cats indoors. As I hope everyone here knows, there are a number of good things happening in Wannakee. Bird City would especially like to commend the village for the natural prairie at the Bolts Conservancy Park with its fabulous views of Lake Mendota and the state capitol, which was started in two thousand and one, when almost thirteen acres of land was donated to the village and is now maintained by many volunteers as well as the village center and the public works department. For its protected natural areas, including an area within Rip Park that was restored into a two-acre prairie filled with native prairie plants, some grown from seeds harvested from the Bolts Conservancy Park. For its dedication to planting up to seventy-five trees in public parks and around village facilities each year, as well as planting native seeds and plants at the Bolts Conservancy Park and Rip Park Prairies. For encouraging varied forms of transportation and reducing motor-vehicle dependency by creating sixty-seven miles of paths that provide biking and walking routes connecting any destination. And for controlling and removing many invasive species in all public areas, especially in its conservancy areas. Actions like these benefit birds and other wildlife and help build a connection to nature that will show current and future decision-makers just how important it is to protect the natural world. I'm here today not only to present you with your award and to trumpet your achievements, but also to say a public thank you to the citizens of Wannakee who work together to protect birds and educate people. Bird City, Wisconsin, would especially like to thank Jeffrey Carles and William Frederick of Wannakee's Department of Public Works, Paul Noldner of Madison Friends of Urban Nature, the entire village and staff, and everyone else who had a hand in your Bird City application and who works hard to make Wannakee a bird-friendly community. Bird City, Wisconsin showcases its recognition with street signs to be hung in your community. I'm bringing two of those today. This is one of the two. The other one is right here. We have a flag also that can be hung outside of a meeting place like this. Like that, okay. I'm happy to present also a plaque also that you can display inside a meeting place like this or wherever you would choose. There were a lot of people can see it. Also presenting to you a copy of Owen Gromy's classic book, Birds of Wisconsin. It's our hope that this book will be displayed at a nature center or maybe in a library, and it could inspire people who read it to understand more about the great birds that we all share this state with. And let's see. I'm also bringing a number of conservation brochures for you to distribute. These items will highlight your current conservation successes while promoting strategies for coordinated, far-reaching, and bird-centered conservation activities in the future. And speaking of bird-centered activities, I didn't want to miss this opportunity to mention that one of the simplest and most effective ways this village can help birds is by serving bird-friendly coffee. Birds and Beans brand coffee is certified bird-friendly. It grows in Central and South America under a canopy of trees that provide shelter, food, and homes to migratory and local birds, including many that we see here day in and day out in Wisconsin. It tastes great, and you can order it now from Bird City, Wisconsin. I have a few order forms with me today. The reason I bring this up is because your purchase will support your local Bird City effort by helping Wannakee meet a criteria on its next Bird City application. In addition, a portion of the sales through Bird City come back to support the overall program. In conclusion, please remember that we at Bird City, Wisconsin, are always here to work with your residents, staff, and elected officials to help you become a community that is even healthier for both birds and people. I sincerely hope that Bird City, Wisconsin, that its relationship with the village of Wannakee is sustained and enhanced for years to come. So congratulations.
Thank you very much.
Here, let's step on over here.
Come on, Jeff, get up there.
Thank you.
I just happen to have a new library that we can put this in, which is great.
I've got one, it's autographed also.
Okay. Next we've got a public hearing. Public hearing and discussion action certified survey map and rezone from A1 to Conservancy. Groundswell Conservancy, O'Malley property, corner of State Highway nineteen and Helen Bran Road.
Introduction, Chris. This is a request by Groundswell Conservancy to divide the O'Malley property into two parcels. The larger of two parcels, which is about eighty-four acres, is proposed to be rezoned from ag to Conservancy. The remaining Lot One will, I mean, the remaining lot will stay A1 agriculture. The plant commission had some discussions on it, and the joint planning commission recommended approval. There was a few conditions on that the town of Westport recommended, which the joint planning commission concurred with, and they were brief, but I'll just go through them quick. Lot one be zoned A1, Lot Two Conservancy. Lot Two be restricted to no further land divisions. That restriction on Lot One, that be no residential use of the lot until it's further rezoned for such use. Any residence resident on lot should be connected to municipal sewer and water. Maintenance of all current easements and restrictions. Dedication of additional seven feet of right-of-way. All special assessments and fees paid, and petitioner provide a copy to the town.
Okay. So then I'm going to open up the public hearing for anybody who'd like to address us on this issue. Mike, you didn't want on this item, correct?
No, I'm with the short-term articles.
Okay. Okay. Anyone?
Is the whole area that was on the map can be conserved, are you there?
I don't know if somebody can bring it up on the screen.
Make sure we have the right map we're talking about.
Yeah. I'll tell you the page.
Page seven or six, eleven.
Thirty-two?
Yeah, thirty-two, thirty-three.
So Lot One will remain agriculture. Lot Two will be Conservancy. So Lot Two is the upper lot, the northern lot. I mean, sorry, eastern lot.
Lot One abuts Helen Bran Road.
And that will-
It'll remain agriculture. At this point, potential future uses could be considered in the future.
Is there any reason why they're not doing that right now?
I guess like I speak, David O'Malley, family, I've been a fan for a long, long time. We kind of working as a given, well, conservation, conserve as much of land as we can for Conservancy under our village park. And remaining land, the ag land, we talked about having this park land, but the village wasn't interested in that this time on the price or whatever, but our plans for the future, we don't know yet. I guess it depends what, how things play out with the rest of it.
Currently, we rent the land to another farmer to raise corn crops on it. We have no plans in motion to do anything different. It's at some point probably so, but there's nothing.
But there's no plans for building that?
No, not right now. In the future, we're going to leave it open for that, so we're not going to make any promises. We may come back sometime in the future and want to do something else with it. If the village isn't interested in further park land, we may need to do that. Not if they're getting any younger. You know what's going to happen after I'm dead. Gary can speak for that.
Well, Chris, I could add that when we, when, oh, Groundswell, when they applied for the grant funding for this project, initially we were thinking we would include Lot One, but that portion or that portion of the land was not eligible for the grant funding, and so that's why we separated it.
Kevin, it doesn't affect the snowmobile trail?
No, snowmobile will still be allowed.
Okay.
How large is Lot One?
Twenty-eight point two eight acres.
And how far north does it go?
We can see the road curve. You can see the land, the boundary on there.
So Helen Bran-
The cornfield is.
It's Westbridge and Helen Bran Road.
Then there's a fence line, then, and then is that Westbridge Trail north of that?
So if you look on, point right there to those lots, there's lots that back up to the Lot One. So that's the actual lot numbers.
Okay.
Does that help you?
Yes. That makes sense.
Okay, that makes sense.
Okay, any other comments or questions? Okay, then I'll close the public hearing. Board members, any comments?
There's someone else.
Oh, sorry, missed it.
I just want to know what made Lot One not eligible to be in the Conservancy.
For the grant funding, we could get, I'm Jim Love from Groundswell Conservancy. For the funding we could raise from the various county, federal, state, local sources, we couldn't string that by a quote unquote. We would have done that, the family wanted to have that happen, but we couldn't connect that.
For purpose of the record, Chris, in the public hearing, we needed names and addresses of everybody who spoke so we can connect that to the comments. So if you could, sir?
Robert Januchowski, seven twenty Westbridge Trail, Wannakee.
Got that one?
Could you spell your last name? Okay.
Dan Murray.
Murray.
N.U.R.R.A.Y., seven twelve Westbridge Trail.
Teresa Self, S.D.L.O., seven eighteen Westbridge Trail.
David O'Malley, five oh nine nine Caton Lane, town of Westport, close to Wannakee, it's a township.
What was the street?
Five oh nine nine Caton Lane.
Thank you.
My older brother, Pat.
Pat O'Malley, eight six two four Hornon Road, H.O.R.N.U.N.G. Road, Sauk City, five three five eight three. You've got you, Jim.
Thank you.
Okay, then I'm going to close the public hearing. Board members, comments, questions?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion to approve by Bill Random, second. Was that you? Second by Erin Moran?
Chris, are you, when you have the approval, are you including the conditions that the town of Westport had suggested?
In the Resolution nineteen point oh three.
All right. That's your question to you.
Yes.
Yes.
Whoever made the motion, then whoever made the second to agree with that, okay.
On page thirty, the one through seven.
Okay, okay. Okay, any other comments? Call the question, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, posed, ayes have it. Next we have license and permits. Discuss and take action operator license applications for William Barnes, Caitlin Larson, Taylor Ballistieri, Madeline Van Hollen, and Jessica Beimers. Lori?
Staff recommends approval of operator license applications for William Barnes, Caitlin Larson, Taylor Ballistieri, Madeline Van Hollen, and Jessica Beimers, subject to successful completion of an approved responsible beverage server training course and review by the Wannakee Police Department.
Okay, do we have a motion? So, motion by Joe Zeltzberger?
Second.
Second by Gary Hertzberg. Any other comments? Call the question, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Posed, ayes have it. Under new business, discuss regarding potential regulation of short-term rentals.
So would you like me to, I'm prepared to kind of give a summary for you all. Short-term rentals is a term that's, in the Wisconsin statutes, another term used for tourist room housing. It's commonly referred to as Airbnbs. And so under our state law, there's a couple different ways that municipalities can adopt ordinances that apply to short-term rentals. So I'm just going to say short-term rentals, but that's what I'm meaning. One is relatively straightforward, and it relates to the room tax. We have a hotel in town where we could, the hotel collects a room tax that is ultimately paid to the village and then can be used for certain activities as stated in the statutes. One of the things the village can do is that we can amend our room tax ordinance to require that room tax is collected from short-term rentals. That's a relatively straightforward modification to our code, and before I go on, well, that's kind of, you can kind of separate that and put it by itself. The other way that we can regulate short-term rentals is either through a licensing process or through a conditional use permit process, so a zoning process. Those are really the two mechanisms that municipalities have used to regulate these short-term rentals. We do not have the authority to prohibit them. What we can do, and probably our greatest power, is to require short-term rentals to be rented for at least seven days. So we can't require them to be rented more than seven days, consecutive seven days. We can, if you're going to regulate them, you can require them to be rented anytime. If you want to do consecutive days, two through seven, and seven is the highest amount of days, and that's per Wisconsin statutes. It's really an individual, and there's other ways that you can then regulate them through the conditional use permit process or potentially the licensing process. Communities have looked at issues related to parking, you know, for these short-term rentals, and really the issue is, short-term rentals are typically in a residential neighborhood. You typically have two or three, possibly four cars associated with a residential house. Most of the time, those cars are in a garage. All of a sudden, if you have short-term rentals within a residential neighborhood and there's a lot of people there, you get a lot of parking, you can have parking issues. So that's one way that you can regulate them. And I should step back and say right now, you don't have anything before you tonight for action. What we're looking to do is get feedback from the village board as to whether or not you want us, staff, to move forward with a draft ordinance amendment on the room tax issue and/or a draft ordinance that regulates them either from a licensing standpoint or from a zoning standpoint, which would be the conditional use permit process. As I said, the, I think the greatest power that we have is to require them to be rented for seven consecutive days, or six, or five, or four, or whatever you should choose to do if you want to regulate them in that fashion. We all, parking is another way that we can impose some certain restrictions on short-term rentals through either a license or a conditional use permit process. We can get at issues related to occupancy. We can get at issues, I think, related to, you know, storage. Things like noise, we already have provisions in our code that relate to noise, and so those provisions would already apply to short-term rentals, whether you decide to regulate them through licensing or conditional use permit or not. And, you know, there's other things that as a staff, if you're interested in adopting such an ordinance, we would, you know, we would sit down, we would take a look at it to see exactly how far you want us to go. Some municipalities have addressed this issue and have applied the room tax to short-term rentals and have adopted. I've only seen it where you do a licensing process or a conditional use permit process. I haven't seen it where a municipality has done both. I, my recommendation would probably do one or the other, and I think you can probably do a little bit more regulation through a conditional use permit process. If you're interested in doing licensing and conditional use permit, I'd probably have to take a look and see if you have the authority to do that. I'm not sure if the village would gain much by doing both, because I think anything that you can do in licensing, you can also do in a conditional use permit. There are other communities who have looked at this issue and have decided not to do either impose the room tax or regulate these in any way, shape, or form, because, you know, the justification that I've heard is they're already regulated by the state, and that's sufficient. And so there's not a right or wrong answer for the village. It's basically whatever the village board wants to do, there's going to be support for the action that you take. That's kind of an overview of our powers. I certainly can answer whatever questions you may have. If I've already said this, I apologize. We cannot prohibit them, though. That is one thing that is clear under state law, is we cannot prohibit them.
So I had several questions for Brian today earlier, but I'll reserve those and let you guys go.
Covenants, covenants that a subdivision has, they can't prohibit them either, then, I would assume.
Well, I wouldn't say that, because the covenants are private agreements between property owners that we are not a part of. And so the statutes that I'm aware of limit the municipal authority to take action. I would tend to believe that, you know, I live in a subdivision that has declarations, and I know there's many here. I think that that probably could be prohibited as part of one of those declarations. I will say, though, I have not seen that issue litigated, and I haven't seen a state statute that I think really gets at it, but I also haven't looked, because I haven't looked at it on the behalf of any private entities, only on behalf of municipalities.
The hotel, do we do inspections for other lodging sites? Are we doing inspections and licensing, or is that the state that does that?
I'm not aware of the village doing any inspection or licensing of the hotel. I do know that the state does, and in fact, the same rules, when you look at the code provisions, the same rules that apply to hotels apply to these short-term rentals also.
So the reason they would not be taxed under the hotel law, I mean, if they are basically a rental, how's it different than the hotel motel industry if they're, why would they not be automatically taxed?
Well, because the room tax is a municipal tax, and so when municipalities adopted the room tax, it was, these entities, these short-term rentals, did not exist. And so state law has been changed. The state law that gives municipalities the authority to impose the room tax has been updated recently to allow for the room tax to apply to short-term rentals, but municipalities who want to do that, we necessarily just have to make that change to our code to, because right- because right now, it doesn't encompass the short-term rentals.
This may be, I just don't know, is this, do we base it on, if we did a tax thing, would you base it basically on the potential number of people that would be inhabiting the?
It would be based on actual use, just like with hotels.
Would you do it based on the number of rooms? Like, I mean, room tax, you're, so the hotel's based on use, not based on the number of rooms?
Yeah, it's based on, it's based on use. They have to collect it each time they have somebody who pays for a room. But if you have a huge hotel and you never have anybody there, your room tax is still based on the number of people who pay to use your services.
And do we have a, you know, five community examples of how they're dealing with this today, or have you looked at that yet?
Well, I can just tell you based, I mean, I work for a number of municipalities. One has adopted a change to their room tax ordinance so that it applies to short-term rentals. And they adopted an amendment to their zoning code so that if you wanna have a short-term rental in that particular village, you have to get a conditional use permit. Another municipality that I work for, the same issue arose, and it chose not to amend the room tax ordinance, and it chose not to regulate short-term rentals. It's, you know, there's reasonable bases, you know, to make either decision. And that's why it's really kind of a personal decision for each municipality.
So, when you're doing a conditional use event, are you charging a flat fee then, like for the licensing of that house?
I think that, you know, we can charge a fee for the conditional use permit application. If we're not going, I don't think that we charge fees for additional fees related to conditional use permits other than just the application fee.
Application fee plus whatever outside consulting fees.
So, we take an escrow. So, if somebody makes an application for a conditional use,
we'll make them pay the application fee, and then they'll escrow a certain amount of dollars. So, if we have consultants, or the attorney or others outside the village that review it, that we get reimbursed for that, so it doesn't cost the village taxpayers money in order to do that review.
And so, I would think that we would have to treat all conditional use permits the same. And so, I don't think that we would end up charging them a fee. Now, I do know, they have to pay a fee to the state already, because whether, no matter what the village of Wannakee does, they're still gonna be, they're still regulated by the state, and there's still processes that they need to follow and fees that they need to pay to get the license through the state. And if, if the, I think it's probably more likely that we can regulate them a little bit more strongly through a conditional use permit process than through a licensing process, although, you know, if you have a strong opinion one way or the other, we can take a look at that. If there is, if you decide to go the license route, just like we charge fees for alcohol license or for dog licenses, we would be able to charge a fee related to a short-term rental license, but that fee really needs to relate to our administrative costs.
So, I'm quoting like potential police costs and such, would that be incorporated in that?
I don't think so, because I think if the police are called there, I mean, we also have other ordinance provisions that, and penalty provisions that necessarily would allow, you know, if somebody's, if someone is in violation of our ordinance, the penalties that we can pursue. I don't really think that we have the ability to pursue, but I'm not aware of the ability to pursue costs related to police services, though. And for what it's worth, I mean, the complaints that I've heard about, whether it's in the village or other municipalities, it's more complaints by neighbors. I haven't necessarily heard of complaints where these are causing police services to be utilized.
Bill, any comments? Aaron?
No, I don't know.
Gary, anything else?
No, it's kind of a tough issue. You wanna be able to have choices for people to come to the village and, you know, from a housing standpoint, yet if you're the neighbor and every weekend there's a party, and it's not the residence, and it's not what you bought into, it's a little difficult, I'm sure, every weekend to think about that. Because the people there really don't care. They're just, they're having a good time, probably.
So, we're not responsible for the safety issues that would come as the village, that would be on the homeowner alone?
Well, I mean, if there's a situation where the police do need to get called, I mean, they would, police and EMS and other situations, they would be called out there like they would, whether it's a resident or a non-resident. All I'm saying is I haven't seen that, I haven't seen things escalate to that point as part of the, you know, these are coming, this issue is coming before municipal boards typically because there have been these short-term rentals, and it has upset the neighbors. And so, then the neighbors call the staff or the elected officials, and then we end up having a discussion like this. But I'm not aware of circumstances where the complaints have escalated to the point because there's actually need to call police or EMS services. It's more, the complaints I've heard are more related to noise, related to parking, and related to concerns, quite frankly, like Gary raised, where now all of a sudden you have people walking in and out of a home that are not the people who bought the house, and it's like, why are these people here?
So, will we be reassessing the neighbors, then? I mean, if the value of their houses go down, are we gonna offer them reassessment because of these things?
Well, I-
Because they will go down. If you have this, if you have the party every weekend, that house isn't worth what it was, it was the tax base on it now.
I think they could make that request, and I guess I'd have to defer to the assessor as to whether or not that would happen. I mean, I think that's ultimately the assessor's call, probably.
But I totally see that happening. I mean, if you're having, one in a neighborhood might drop the value of that whole neighborhood immediately, basically.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think the difficult part, I think, is you can drive it to a covenants, and Michael probably knows more about this than I would, but you can put it in the covenants, but then you got an HOA that in a lot of cases doesn't have a lot of power to rein in these people anyway, because they don't have the authority to limit those people hardly from doing it, so it-
Well, if it's in the covenants, I mean theoretically, then if it's prohibited in the covenants, then you can't do it.
Theoretically, but who monitors that? Who enforces it?
I agree that with homeowners' associations, it, the distinction is in the declarations, there's the potential that it can be absolutely prohibited, whereas municipalities cannot do that.
Joe?
I spent some fantastic discussion. I don't really have anything beyond, I guess the only thing I would say is, yeah, I think we need to look deeper into it.
Okay. So, my only comment, and I had a conversation with Brian this afternoon about this, and I would just ask anybody that's sitting in the room, if you are a homeowner in Wannakee, do you want a short-term rental next door, do you want a regular basis? And I don't know what the answer's gonna be on that. I know that my answer is no, that I wouldn't want my house to have short-term rentals right next to it, kind of regular basis. So, whatever we can do, from my perspective, to, we can't eliminate them, we can hold that.
Disincentive, disincent-
Well, so-
Whatever we can put for strongest language possible to-
And I can-
Try to, that's what I wanna use here, not invite, I don't wanna say word.
Disincent-
Well, I would say that you would regulate them to the extent of the law that you're allowed to do so. I mean, if, what I'm hearing, at least from, I haven't heard anybody inconsistent with this, is, well, the first is, do you want us to prepare an amendment to the village code such that the room tax that applies to hotel, the hotel would also apply to short-term rentals? I mean, that's the first question.
And who monitors and collects and?
Well, the, we monitor and we collect. There was, you know, within the last couple of weeks, there was a change in the state law to make it easier, well, I would say to give us more powers if someone is not paying, which is a positive, is a step in the right direction. Because I will tell you that there are some communities that have chosen not to do that, because they're like, we got five of them, and the administrative cost is gonna be greater than whatever we collect. That being said, they did just change the state law to give us a little bit more power to collect if we do try to collect and we're not paid.
I think the change allows the parent company, so corporate Airbnb would collect on behalf of their client household.
That was, that was actually already in-
Oh, it is.
The state statutes. I think that it allows us to collect based on failure to pay taxes, which is just, it gives us a little bit more power than having to, for example, go to court and try to collect the taxes. And I would tell you that if you want us to update the code, you know, then we're gonna make sure that we have whatever power state law gives us to collect the taxes. We're gonna make sure that that would apply to the village.
So, to finish my comments-
No, sorry.
-regards to it, no, it's okay. Wannakee's about a community, and I think if you're opening this up, that people can have rentals next door to everyone. That doesn't foster a great community atmosphere. If you have a new person next door to you on a regular basis, I can go to any of my neighbors right now, they know who I am. It could be a security thing for people just not knowing who that is that's next door to them. And then the next day, there's a different person there. Probably not gonna go ask them for milk or anything if you need something on the side. I'm just thinking that this isn't such a great thing for Wannakee. But again, this is my initial thoughts. This is, you know, just brought on us and asked among some residents, I think is where this kinda came from again. So, that's just my opinion. Aaron, you wanted to make a comment?
Yeah, I guess I don't totally agree with that, especially as we, you know, are advertising great events and, you know, it's for businesses. I don't know, I think maybe it can be useful. We don't have a ton of these, but, you know, if someone needs to stay here, we are very close to the airport, we do advertise that, I don't know. I understand that. I guess I'm just not fully on board with that, but.
You don't have to be fully on board, we're just discussing, so this is my initial thoughts, because this just came to us. Phil, you think you had something you wanna say?
Well, I don't know too much about them, to be honest with you. I'm kinda typical stay-at-a-motel kinda guy. I know the motel collects the taxes, it's expensive. I know people who have stayed in Airbnb, I don't know where, but hopefully, we could at least collect the tax. Hopefully, we could limit it by X number of days, so we could make it difficult to do it easily and have different people every night.
Okay. So, I don't know if we're giving any direction there, but-
Well, I would say this, if, if, again, again, I think there's two issues. There's one, there's the room, and you can do nothing, you can do everything, or you can do one or the other. One issue is the room tax, and then the other issue is regulation from the standpoint of licensing or conditional use permit process. I would tell you that, you know, the conditional use permit process, if you were to do that, what we would do is we would come back to you with an update to the ordinance. And this is zoning ordinance. So, we would, our practice has been that if we're going to change our zoning code, we have a class one public hearing before the plan commission, and then we have a, and then we have a statutory class two public hearing before the village board. So, to, you know, there would definitely be ability for public input on the conditional use permit process. And just because we draft something and bring it to you does not mean that you're gonna be bound to approve it. It may be, you know, so that's one option. The other option is to say, you know what, we wanna think about this a little bit more. And so, you don't, you say, pause at this point, and we can put this back on the agenda. You can have an additional discussion like you're having tonight, so we wouldn't have action. And maybe at that point, you would, after you've thought about it a little bit more, you'd have a little bit stronger feeling on which direction you wanna go as to whether or not you want staff to prepare an ordinance amendment or not. But again, just the act of telling staff to move ahead and preparing something so that you can take a look at it and so that we can have more of a public hearing process, does not mean that you're bound to make the change when it is before you.
I came up with the word I was looking for. I wanna make it as inconvenient as possible to have it done. That's what the word I was looking for, so. I think, you know, we've heard from different things here. We wanna direct staff to come back with something, and I wanna get more public input, too. I don't feel like we're-
Yeah. I think we have a clear photo that's going on.
Well, what I would tell you is, if you want, I mean, you have the authority to allow public comment right now. This was not posted as a public hearing. Even, you have the ability, if you want to, to have it on the next board agenda and have it noticed. I mean, we're not, because this is totally discretionary, you're not subject to any class one or class two notice requirements, you can put it on your agenda as a public hearing. And again, not to have action just to get input. I think you can allow comments tonight, too, but what I would tell you is, because it wasn't, I mean, if you truly wanna get input, I would say that you might wanna have it on again, because it wasn't posted as a public hearing.
So, I'm in favor of doing that for the next meeting, to have a public hearing on this, that we can get more input.
Can he start with, write the most inconvenient path also?
Well, I think that's, I think before we even do anything, we're gonna get the public input. I think that's important.
I mean, just to add, I mean, you guys aren't doing it here right now. The most inconvenient thing that you can do related to short-term rentals is require them to be rented for at least for seven consecutive days. That is, that's your power, really. Now, there are other regulations related to parking and other things that you can put in there. I will tell you that, that, I'll just, it was Village Mount Horeb, and it was an open session. The ordinance was drafted to require seven consecutive days of rental, and the village board changed it to two. And there was a discussion very similar to the one that is occurring right now. And the village board ultimately said, you know, in fact, we don't want people to just rent it for one night, but we have a lot of, we're a destination, and we want, we only have one hotel, and we wanna allow, we don't wanna totally prohibit these. Now, what Mount Horeb did is irrelevant to what Wannakee wants to do, but they had a similar discussion to what you all have had, and then they obviously took it a little bit further, because they had the ordinance in front of them, so they had the public hearings process. You have the discretion, if you want to, to do what I said earlier, which is not even have anything drafted and just say, you know what, we're gonna put it on the next board agenda for a public hearing, because we, before staff does any more work, we want public input.
And there's no way to limit the number of times a person could do an Airbnb during the year? Say, you know, five times a year, or?
Well, it's, for them to be regulated by the state, they have to do it at least ten times. Now, we wouldn't have to have that in there. I mean, the second that you do it, to be able to do it once, you'd have to get a conditional use permit. There is language that is, that, it's actually the exact opposite is the way I read it. It's just, if you're gonna operate this, well, there's other ways that we can get at that. It's a little bit more complicated. But if you do wanna, if ultimately the village board wants us to pursue some type of regulation, we have the ability to work in kind of a total number.
Because I still think, as Aaron said, I mean, we have some great events in the community. We wanna bring new people into the community and showcase it, but if their choice is the single hotel and it happens to be full, or, you know, we're trying to limit, you're kinda limiting- The ability of people to stay here, so.
The problem also is that you bring in risk to the neighbors. I mean, which choice, who are you picking?
I've used Airbnb multiple times and ended up staying places that I probably went to. And it's really a cool way to experience smaller communities.
I've done it, but usually it's in.
Yeah.
Can we guys take any public comments tonight?
I think what's gonna happen is we're gonna do a public hearing next time to take care of that. As my power of the chair, I can ask if everybody wants to proceed down that, that we do a public hearing, because it's the most appropriate way to do it.
I'd like to see a public hearing and have people-
It gives more people the opportunity to come in to talk in regards to this. We're not making any decisions tonight, we're not directing staff. We're just basically putting it on the agenda for the next time with a public hearing. Is everybody good with that?
Can we clarify, before the public hearing, there'll be no action from staff, right?
No. Yeah, that's what I'm hearing. I'm hearing, we're not doing anything, except for making sure that this is on the agenda for the next board meeting for a public hearing.
That's all.
Okay, good. Okay, so then we can just move on, right? Or do we have to make any kind of motion?
Nope, you don't have to.
All right. The last item on the agenda, update regarding village trustee vacancy process. So, the process that the board undertook the last, well, two weeks, two meetings ago, I believe it was, was that we were going to take applications for anybody who was interested in becoming, or filling the vacant seat by Sue Springman. And those were due today at four fifteen. And they were turned in to Lori, Caitlin, that department. And then, when I got here tonight, these were on my, this must be them. Joe received it. So, Joe and I are going to be reviewing all of these. Once we've reviewed them, we're gonna rank what we think for ourselves. Those will be completed, we give that then to Todd. Todd takes the numbers, puts them together, and then we were going to interview, how many do we have in?
Nine.
Nine. So, we talked to interview four or five of them from there. It's about the same that we had last time for people that turned in, so. That's pretty much the process. Todd, do you wanna read who was all?
Yep, the applications are public. I forwarded them all to the board, the PDF of that earlier today. And we can make those available publicly as well. I think we'll probably just do a, we'll probably make them available on the village website. Roberta, I'll send you a copy. Roberta, I'll send you a copy. But I can read the names of address and addresses of the applicants in alphabetical order. Nyla Frye, 404 East Verlaine. Mary Heimbecker, 306 West Third. Roxanne Johnson, 818 North Meadowbrook. Ann Lewandowski, 103 West Third. David Lisowski, 1108 Ridgetop Drive. Robert McPherson, 1703 Alexandria Court. Steve Miller, 101 East Verlaine. Kristen Rungy, 1316 Lawton Lane. John Soper, 11, 1,001 Spawn Drive, and those are your nine.
So, our goal is then to get that done, get those to Todd. Once Todd has them, he'll have those four or five, and we'll be scheduling interviews with those people, not this week, but next week.
And we'll work, I assume you're going to want to work to coordinate those in one, one set meeting time?
Hopefully, yes.
And we will, those will be, that's going to be a public, open meeting, and we will plan to record that as well.
Okay. Any questions from board members about this? Is that everybody's understanding of how that was going to work?
Yep.
So, we did have one individual ask to be heard. I'm going to allow that, and, but I will say that it's not going to be a banter situation, it's if you want to make comments to us, that's fine, but we're not going to go back and forth on it. This is kind of the process that we've taken, and the board has agreed to it in a past meeting. Go ahead.
I'd like to ask the board to reconsider the timeframe for the, filling the term. Originally, you talked about filling it for the full, up till 2021, there's an election next year. I think that constituents should have somebody who is elected, not appointed, and so there wouldn't be a cost for a special election, because there's going to be an election in April 2020 anyways. It just makes sense to me that you actually have people able to vote. I think what you're doing now is fine, you know, that it's good that you have somebody that if you had to have a tiebreaker person, that you need to appoint somebody, but instead of appointing for the whole time, it almost seems like the person who's getting appointed gets a free pass, that they didn't run, they didn't do anything to campaign, and they'll just get appointed after going through the application process, whereas if you actually have an election in 2020, it's more representative. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay? Any other comments from board members? Do you want to modify?
Motion.
Based on that? Any changes? Okay. So...
Motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn. Motion by Gary, second by Bill. Any other comments? Want to question, on favor, say aye. Ayes, votes? Ayes, aye.
Did we like...